Everybody for coming tonight.
Mr. Milling is joining us by phone. He's still in the doctor order.
We also have Mr. Milling, his own speakerphone to dial for some disabled to attend. So he's here for his speakers. I want you to order if you'll leave us a prayer, please.
Please bow your heads and pray. Lord, thank you for bringing us all together to do the city's business. I pray we all honor you in our service tonight and ask that you guide us in doing the city's business in a manner with which you approve. Amen.
Amen.
Have everybody raise up. Let's believe.
I pray that we can survive in our states of America into the republic which stands on a nation under our peaceful, complete justice.
Do we have a motion for approval of minutes for executive session from July the sixth, two thousand twenty-one?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of our executive session of July sixth, two thousand twenty-one, and our regular city council meeting on August third, two thousand twenty-one.
Do them together or separately?
I don't think we can do it together.
Separately, Russ.
Yeah, I'll second the first motion.
I make a motion that we approve the regular city council meeting on August third, twenty twenty-one.
We got two motions to approve the session of July the sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Now, Mr. Dallas? Mrs. Dax? Mr. Milling?
Yes.
Hi. Do we have a motion for approval of regular city council meeting on August the third, two thousand twenty-one?
I'll motion that we approve the regular city council meeting on August third, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Mr. Dallas?
Yes.
Mrs. Dax? Mr. Sager? Mr. Milling?
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to amend those August third minutes under new business. Says first reading on the ordinance relating to resubmiting to Orange Street. As I read those minutes, it indicates that no action was taken. But my memory is that the council took a vote because I had recused myself because I had previously represented Willie Johnson and family and had talked with Ms. Johnson and her daughters about the property that is.
Yeah, that's correct. We voted.
So we need to amend those August three minutes to reflect that there was a vote.
So do we have a motion to amend the August third meeting for the regular city council meeting showing that you voted for the Orange Street?
I'll motion to amend the regular city council meeting on August third, twenty twenty-one, as Councilman Milling requested. Second.
This is Reed. Mrs. Dax? Mrs. Sager? Hi. Very good.
Hi.
Mr. Milling? All right, before we do approval of the meeting tonight, I would like to ask for amendment concerning to be added for tonight for consideration for funds for the DDRA for additional concert to be talked about tonight. If we could amend that tonight under new business? Put it out of the meeting. Discuss that.
I'd also like an amendment.
Okay.
And I would like to amend it that we remove the bullets from six so that we can allow allow the at least some interchange between our citizens and the council members as that is their only time dedicated to them at least having a participation in our meeting.
Discuss that. And put that as F?
Say again.
Put that as F and discuss that tonight.
Okay. And I just want to amend it so that that, you know, they, we already have policies in place for disruptive behavior and the timing and things of that call. But to put this as a bullet up under there.
Well, the first one is correct. They're not supposed to address us. The second one, we have the right to address them if we want to address them.
Exactly. But it says may not, and I don't like that part. I'm an elected official.
I have no problem taking that out. But like I said, we have the right as council to address them.
Appreciate it.
So that's going to be F? Public comment discussion?
We just amended the word says council members may engage speakers in discussion, so we may.
So just strike out "not."
Not.
Right. These are bullets, so.
Am I okay with that?
So I'd like to approve the meeting agenda to include E, DDRA, funding music events. And then for number six, public comment, to strike the word "not" out of council members may not engage speakers in discussion.
Second.
My second.
Mrs. Reed? Mrs. Dax? Mr. Milling?
Yes.
Hi. Very good. Motion approved. Thank you. All right, now, report a standing committee to the Darlington Downtown Revolution Association. This is Rob.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the time to come up here before you. As the executive director of the DDRA, I am also chair of the beautification board. And our annual cleanup day for the fall will be this Saturday from nine to twelve, meeting at the Chamber. And we will do mainly litter pickup this time, as well as a couple of other projects such as decorating for fall. So we do encourage folks to come out. Cal Meadow Pride has given us supplies, trash bags, vests, the grabbers, that sort of thing, so that we can continue to make our city a great place. Also, thank you so much for your support of our program to have the city concert series that we've been doing. We had our third event this past Saturday, and it was huge. There were a ton of people there. And it was a very big mix, young, old, everybody represented at that event. And everybody was having a good time. And I just want to say thank you again for that. Our next concert is October second. We're going to have an eighties block party with the Bout Time Band, which is the Darlington Band, playing eighties music. It will be October second from seven to ten P. M. downtown. Sassy Girl Antique, one of the local businesses, will be offering a prize for the best eighties costume that evening. You can also check out classic cards, a cornhole tournament, and a variety of food trucks. And as always, we'll have free Pepsi and water, thanks to Pepsi Appliance. Also, the DDRA continues our monthly member breakfasts, eight A. M., Thursday, September thirtieth, at Taki's Diner. It's no charge for members and a small five-dollar fee for those who are not members. And it really serves to connect our businesses so that we can support each other. Also, mark your calendars. October is another busy month. Taste Darlington, Thursday, October fourteenth, at Darlington Raceway. Normally, we have this event in the spring, but because of COVID concerns at the track, they we were not allowed to have it in April. They are allowing us to have it in October, just as they had full capacity at the race this weekend. We'll be at full capacity for the Taste of Darlington. If you're a business civic group, if you're a church, or if you're an individual and you just want share your love of cooking and something you really enjoy, please get in contact with my office and we'll get you signed up. In the meantime, we continue to promote Darlington and its businesses on our social media and through our news alert system. Each week, we reach around three thousand people. And we continually update our website, buildupdarlington.org. You can submit information to that website. You can also sign up to receive these alerts directly to your phone as a text message or directly to an email.
Can you explain that to them one more time real clear so everybody understands? Because a lot of people say, well, I didn't know about this, I know about that. And you get, I get texts all the time, so how do, I forgot. So how do they sign up for a text?
So if you, and most people have a cell phone, and this is kind of why we paid the extra money to have this website. You go to buildupdarlington.org, and at the top, you look for news alerts, sign up for news alerts. You click on that, you punch in your cell phone number, and it'll send them to you as they are sent out. We send them out each week, as well as sometimes we'll send additional ones during the week if something big is going on, or if there are weather alerts and things like that will also be sent out that way. And you can get it sent as a text to your phone or as an email, whichever way you prefer. All right. And then you've got your flyers, another date to put on your calendar, Scare on the Square. That is a joint project between DDRA and Darlington Recreation, which is basically a safe trick-or-treating environment for folks downtown on the square to go in and out of those businesses that are there. And if your business or church wants to participate and you're not located on the square, just give us a call. We'll get you a table, and you can have a table, a booth set up, to distribute your promotional materials and candy to the children. The first year we did it, we had about eight hundred kids, and it's grown to probably fifteen hundred the last time that we did it in two thousand nineteen. So it's a really good time, and a lot of the community comes out. It's early enough in the day that the smaller children can come out and participate.
What is the date and time?
It is Thursday, October twenty-eighth, the Thursday before Halloween, four thirty to six thirty. Any questions?
May I have a name, please?
The beautification board, is the beautification board still maintaining the entrances into the city?
Previously, the beautification line item that funded the cleanup of those entrances was a separate line item in the planning budget prior to, you know, when I was with the city in two thousand thirteen. From two thousand thirteen till about two thousand sixteen, it was still a separate line item. And it went to a specific company that was supposed to keep up the entrances. The beautification board and councilor is not happy with the results for what they were paying. They didn't feel like they got a good deal. And so they decided, instead of bidding it out again, to hire somebody to do those entrances and trees and rose gardens and different beautification projects. And so that was added into the budget at that time. Several people have gone through that position. It's a very challenging, and we discussed this in the budget work sessions, sort of a challenge to keep people in that position because they're working by themselves and to keep track of them and to have enough equipment when the street department has duplicate equipment. And obviously, larger equipment, you know, as far as cutting grass and that sort of thing. They've got zero-turn mowers. We don't need one zero-turn mower in the planning department when the street department has three. And so to kind of remove that duplication, we, with this last budget, as our, as we lost another person in that department, my understanding was with previous city administrator that that position was going to be absorbed into the street department because that's really where it should go. They can work as a team, and I've seen them work as a team cleaning up at the entrance there in front of the, it used to be Saveway. What is it now, Shell? On Pearl Street where four oh one and Pearl Streets comes together, there's this island with some bushes and things. As a team, those guys can go out there and knock it out in an hour, maybe two, three. It was taking one person half a day to a whole day to do that one area. So it's certainly much more efficient in those standpoints.
Sure. When we were talking about budgets, if I remember correctly, the staff department said they were short-staffed now. So if your understanding is that they're not short-staffed, they can incorporate that and do that person to do that.
I can't hear what you're saying. You're saying it so easy, what did you just say?
Alex, would you help with this?
My question was that during the budget sessions, we talked about Alex's group being short-staffed. So in her reference to that, I just want to make sure that Alex isn't short-staffed and if he can accommodate that need to help them. That's all that I'm asking.
I can't answer that question.
Alex can.
Alex can.
Like I've said before, I don't have the manpower. We are short-staffed, and we don't mind doing it, but we're going to have to have another person. I mean, if she wants to give us that person that she had, I'd be more than happy to hire somebody. Right now, I don't have manpower to be able to take over those flower beds and stuff entrances. We don't have manpower to do it.
May I, um, finish answering your question, Mr. Dax? Um, so this year, in preparation to the race, I don't know if you noticed, at the entrances, they are.
Yeah.
They did a fabulous job. Oaks Landscaping came in and tidied them up before the race. Beautification Board is paying for that, and some hospitality money is going towards that. And that is what was decided to be done in the short-term last minute.
And they look fresh. They look really good.
So Lisa, I didn't hear, who did do that? Are you saying the beautification board did approve it?
Oaks Landscaping. Yeah, they approved a portion of the money.
Say it again.
They approved a portion of the money paid back.
I mean, the group. They, whoever.
The beautification board approved a portion of that.
No, no, I just wanted to know, who did you approve? The name of the company?
Oaks Landscaping. I called several different companies. Some of them didn't call me back. I called about five or six of them. Some of them didn't call me back. One of them said, I simply don't have the people, I've got people out on COVID, to do it in the timeframe that we had of the middle of August to getting it done for the race.
So now, let me make sure I'm clear, because I did think this was correct. The beautification board, that person that we were funding for that was not.
Is no longer in the budget.
It's, but it is being, I thought it was being moved to a street sanitation.
That was my understanding.
That it is there so that, but so Alex is now letting us know that it's not. So it's lingering somewhere out there. So that person that we could pay for him to do that, we need to clear that out, guys, if that's, if that's what's holding us up. Because he doesn't have it. He's saying he does not have that in his budget.
In our discussion in the budget work session, it was decided that you, that council wanted a grant rider. And if the street department was going to pick up that, the entrances, that we would fill that space in the planning department with a grant rider. That was all discussed in the budget work session.
Grant riders.
I'm just, I'm just going to.
And we are not paying a grant rider price.
So what's going to happen now will be, we would, since we don't have a beautification board person to do maintenance of our entrances.
A city worker directed by the beautification board.
Okay. So that means the entrances is going to go lichen until the next event or something? So now, in two weeks, all the entrances is going to look raggedy again because we don't have an event coming up or two months?
With the, to the street department.
I don't even know how it got to the street department.
I don't remember.
He don't have it, but he, he don't have it.
I remember we discussed a grant rider. I remember that with this business. But I don't remember us having a conversation of, of, of eliminating the person to do beautification of the entrances. I don't remember that conversation.
I remember this conversation. I remember Alex coming up and asking for raises for his employees and needing more help because he needs, we don't have enough people cutting. I remember the conversation was saying that we've got the disability board walking through town cutting our grass. I can remember me personally going out constantly and paying my employees and me cutting the entranceways in front of the Saveway. Paid, I paid to keep Wells Park cutting. I paid to keep the entranceway of the, of the, turning into Mayo that I went up there to. I paid for that for years to keep all that cutting. So as we all want it, we need to sit down and make sure that we got there. And it should be in his department. She shouldn't be handling a grass cutter. He should be handling a grass cutter, but he needs the money to put the grass cutter out there so that we can have enough people cutting grass and make our city look the way it's looking. That's what I've been asking for, for a long time. So that's great.
They don't have the power of the beautification board. To beautify the city, heaven, the glory was for. The purpose of the beautification board.
But we've got to have some people to do that.
So our move now is, is that an issue that we need to address right now to get it straight?
I think it'll be more along the lines of a future agenda item reader or work session will be a little more appropriate as everybody.
We don't need to address it right second, but it does need to be addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I have a second, please? All right.
Chamber.
All right. Ready to go on to the chamber of council?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ms. Sylvester had a class tonight, so I'm standing in for her, but she sent me her notes. We would like to congratulate our chamber member, covered in cotton, for being named a finalist in the Emerging Business Award by the United States Chamber of Commerce. This is one of the awards that will be held at the Big Dream Awards that will be held Thursday, October twenty-first, at five P. M. The Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce is interested in holding a restaurant crawl that will be starting up in October. This event will benefit local restaurants who choose to participate. If you own a restaurant, be on the lookout for a visit for one of our board members. If you would like more information, please call Ms. Sylvester at the Chamber. This event will be promoting all of the restaurants that participate, and the people who visit the most restaurants will win cash prizes at the end. The Grand Old Post Office will host the first annual Small Business Expo on Saturday, September eighteenth, from nine to two P. M. Retailers craft samples, raffle prizes, food trucks, and more. They are still looking for indoor and outdoor vendors, and please contact them at nine four four zero one five seven. The Food Network will be in our area coming this fall with their hit show, Restaurant Impossible. They are casting right now to find a restaurant. With ten thousand dollars and two days, Chef Irvine revamps your restaurant. If you are interested in this program, please call Brooke at the Chamber. She has the information and the application process. Heroes for Health, the free medical clinic in Darlington County, will be hosting the third annual Heroes for Health Classic Golf Tournament. They will be located at Darlington Country Club on September twenty-third. It's a hundred dollars a player and four hundred dollars a team. All proceeds will be used to help provide medical care for the uninsured population in the city. They are, they also are accepting sponsorship. We would like to thank Sheila with Code Enforcement for her continued support as we try to get our building issues fixed at the Chamber. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Citizens for Public Comments, we're providing us a five-minute time limit, if you will. Do you want to say, uh, recognize?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Wanted to come here tonight and express, expressed a concern and as, as I'm sure everyone here, and as evident as the, uh, people joining us for the meeting tonight, we all love Darlington. And as we all know, Darlington is steep in great history. And we want to, we want to keep that history. And my concern with, with moving or rezoning another area there on Orange Street to a general commercial zone could have potential adverse effects. And there, I own the property there, two fourteen and two twelve, Orange Street, and which is directly behind and is in the vicinity of this area. We were speaking about rezoning. And I just wanted to address council tonight to please consider, let's, let's, you know, we have the historical district intact for, for a reason, and I would request that council consider leaving the historical district intact in the way it is and zoned the way it is as well. And with that, Mr. Mayor, council, I yield the balance of my tongue. Appreciate y'all having me tonight.
Who are you?
I apologize. I am Brenton Dana. I am the son of the late James Dwight Dana and son of Paula Fleming Dana. And again, I own the property there on two fourteen and two twelve, Orange Street. And a born and raised in Darlington and active in its historical preservation and especially there in the historical district of Darlington. And I just believe it is in Darlington's best interest to keep it zoned the way it is and not move to a general commercial, excuse me, general commercial zoning. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is Joyce Thomas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and of course, council members. First, I would like to say the event Saturday night was great. We need to do more of that type of activity, but it was great. It was well-attended, and it was made Darlington on the map. I have four items that I would like to address to you. And of course, this is, it would be, no, it's not a strange thing because we've talked about this for years, maybe four or fifty years, possibly, before I was born. The first item that I would like to call your attention to is the flooding. Systematic poor drainage, that's number one. Second is the street. I don't understand how you all have more orange cones around because they're all in the streets, especially in South Darlington. I think we need to look at that. I only have five minutes, so I'm not going to detail about that. We're working as a team on that. Not only that, lighting. Down South Main Street, you can't see anything after a certain time. I think we need to, of course, I don't know if you have devised your comprehensive plan yet, but we need to kind of include lighting and the infrastructure. We've had some accidents, and I mean, maybe one or two persons was killed. I'm not really sure about that. And, okay, and of course, we talked about the flooding and drainage of the streets. Okay, and the last thing that I would like to know is, how are the citizens going to respond to complaints that they have? I know, and this is like, it's like a thought question, but how do you, and especially with the seniors? We need to devise a way without the computers and the iPhones. Seniors need to know how to get in touch with the city officials. And I know lately you all have had a change of staff, and I don't know if it came out in the news and press or public. I was out of town for a month. But people do read the news and press. They read the papers, especially our seniors. I'm a real focus for seniors. Now, I'm in that group, and if everybody in here live long enough, hopefully, they're beginning to do it too. But let's, I think, again, just try to think about seniors when we're making these changes and policies and so forth. And I'm sorry I didn't say who I was. I'm Joyce Thomas, first as a private citizen. I represent Darlington County Council, not only that, but the portion that represents the city also. And I think I'm kind of through with everything. I didn't talk about the pot holes, but I don't need to talk about pot holes. We know what's going on. But I appreciate the job that you all are doing. So please, let's try to work together as a team and get things done. Darlington, we've got some good potential.
Joyce Thomas, we're, we are addressing the issue, hopefully, with a ramp coming in.
Yes, sir.
And the city, back there, the city sewer, they have done a wonderful job of getting the drains sucked out and cleaned. But again, if you, when it does flood up and it's that deep and your cars drive through it and you're out there looking at it, walking through it, you can see it circulating and going down, and so it is flowing good, but it's only that big. So we are, we are, we do have it in the works to see if we can get something down there. And the streets, we've got Pearl Street and Main Street getting ready to be paved. If it's about asking them to be paved.
Yes, sir.
The guys have been out with the pot holes, and we can't seem to quite catch up enough to get everybody. We need, we need more help out there with that, too.
Yes, sir. We really do.
We're on it, and we're trying to get more help and more assistance to get all that done. And the lighting has, I don't think, they've got all the lighting changed, but we didn't get it approved. And all the lighting, if you look up, you see the little L. E. D. lights. They're working on getting, we've got that approved. They have all the lights in town changed to that, but I agree with you that we probably use more, always use more lighting. You're right, you're right, too. probably use more, always use more lighting, as I already worked, you're right, too.
And the individual streets, too, you know, that mean, uh, you, um, we're gonna be together with this, right?
We would.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. All right, uh, David, uh, Long?
Longaker.
Longaker, okay. Okay.
In connection with Angela Johnson, because we are on the same group.
Yeah, yeah, David and Angela.
We represent the, the CRC and we're here to discuss and, and get this finalized for the rezoning, for the, the parcel that's on Orange Street. It, it's all one big property that was actually deeded on Pearl Street. When the zoning was originally set up, it was set up somehow that that got chopped into a residential section, but the rest of the hospital buildings were general commercials. Doesn't make sense, it's all one property. It needs to just be corrected as one property funded a general commercial.
So the hospital's already zoned as general commercial?
That was our understanding, yes. So we're not trying to change the system or, or what's there.
There's two lots.
It's just correcting.
There's two lots, so you're trying to get the back lot.
It's, yeah, it should be all one, one general commercial property.
And, um, well, first off, I'd be remiss, I'm Angela D. Johnson, D. gets a little lost topic, and I just agree, um, I'm a little taken off guard when I heard Brenton Dana come up here because, um, I remember the triplet's birth. I was a cashier at Piggly Wiggly, and to hear him come up here as a full grown adult, it's been years since I heard the thing about the, the Dana triplet.
Yeah.
But, um, wish I'd met you, so wonderful. But I remember that day like it was yesterday, everybody coming in to Piggly Wiggly talking about the triplet.
The Dana.
Yeah, the Dana triplet, so, yeah, that's, so, it's cool seeing you again. But to piggyback on what Longaker just said, Mr. Longaker just said, that, um, from historical perspective, CRC has been in the community for decades, and we have been at that location for decades. And we felt strongly that we've been a strong contributor to the city of Darlington. Nothing we have ever sponsored, partnership with others to sponsor, has come close to compromising the culture of any area in the city, namely, Orange Street. We've always been a strong supporter of the city of Darlington, and nothing's gonna change that. What we're doing as a statement in the last meeting is simply to ensure that we're in compliance with what the city of Darlington requires. We want to be in compliance with the city ordinances, and that's really the only thing that we're doing right now. Nothing that we're doing is setting a particular.
The lot, the lot, the lot, the two, two, two lots? Is it, is it two lots on, on the map?
It's shown deeded, it was originally deeded as just one big lot.
But the flood is zoned as, is already zoned as general commercial, the back is zoned as residential?
Yes.
And is there a reason why you want to rezone the back?
To have the one property as the, the general commercial. That building that is on the section that's listed as residential, it was a maintenance building originally for the hospital, which also doesn't make any sense. If it was part of the hospital and has a maintenance building, why was it never set as one big general commercial property? But what, the zoning originally captured.
But this time, if you're not looking to build anything on the back or anything?
Hey, the building's there, I mean, it's, it's not changing.
I'm saying you're not looking to build anything on the back or anything.
Right.
So what is it to having it? So if you're not looking to build or change anything, what's?
There, over time, there, there was activities and things in that building through the CRC. Uh, the, the last was, uh, a little thrift shop, consignment store, which under ordinances and codes would not be consistent to have that part of the CRC in that building.
And your thought process is to do, what would that building change and bring it back up so that you can?
As I stated in the previous meeting, the board has just been reassembled, and what we are doing is working to reestablish CRC as a critical part of Darlington's culture and, and environment. So we are still making decisions as a board as to how we're going to proceed. So we haven't made any specific change plans, any specific plans for how we're going to proceed with two or three Orange Streets.
But you haven't ruled out what could take place either. So you're saying, you're saying you don't have plans, but that doesn't mean that you could not develop plans in the future to do something more drastic, is that right?
Mr. Nettles, we have one plan right now, and that is to ensure that we are in compliance with what the ordinances are as they are today, I understand that, okay? And to ensure that we are following suit with what past precedents in Darlington have dictated. So we, I've asked for the city council to provide me a precedent, and in going through your minutes for the past two, three years, I've only been able to identify one that I think specifically is in line with what we're experiencing with the CRC requesting to be zoned as general commercial. And that is the one for Avenue D and Main Street. So as I, as I understood in the minutes from May of 2019 and June of 2019, this is a situation very similar to what we have here. We have a community who has property that they were attempting to have operate as commercial as opposed to residence. And so it's my understanding, based almost in your minutes, there were almost 300 petitioners in that neighborhood that did not want to pursue that area becoming used as commercial. But it was still able to because apparently that was the right thing to do, based on city council's understanding. And so we are just attempting to do the same thing. We're trying to do what's right in our CRC on a business life and get it correct.
But still haven't answered my question. So you talked about what your short-term plans are, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand. What you're not saying is that you don't have potentially long-term plans that are gonna be more impacted to the historical district, so that's just what I'm trying to find out.
I've answered your question with my very first statement, when I explained, Mr. Nettles, that we have been here for decades and have done nothing to impact the culture of the historic district, and we will continue to govern ourselves in a manner that's consistent with protecting the culture of Darlington.
So, let's just be clear. In your, uh, reorganizing the, the CRC center, uh, the board, you wanted to be in compliance with Darlington's policies, rules, and codes. The codes said that you needed to be general commercial, or commercial. You were told that based on, because it was, uh, that, that's how the front part of the partner's been operating all this time. And all you wanted to do is to make sure that all of the property, which is one piece, has the same code. We don't know from what I'm understanding you're saying, you are not aware when it was separated, I've got a different coding on the back, uh, from the front and all that. You just want to be in compliance with Darlington and the, our board, our code has said, this is what you need to do. You're not trying to do anything else.
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
Exactly. We didn't get to see the minutes, but what was stated in the last meeting, I think Lisa may have stated it, that, that as far as this zone categorization that we have, that's something that we didn't start until the seventies. So, you can't really speak to.
It is fine, I, I'm understanding now, and because there was this understanding that there were two codes.
Right.
One for the back of the building and one for the front, all you were trying to do. Now, it is, it, I think this is an issue with the codes. Not that we can't, seemingly, we gotta let them build.
Now, it is my understanding that the zoning, I don't want to get the, the organizations mixed up. Lisa, is zoning or planning has already, yeah, could you repeat that?
Oh, the planning official is the one who approves, or they don't approve, they recommend to council.
Thank you for that.
Are we gonna discuss this project now or are we gonna wait till us, the public?
Let's, uh, let's just cut it here and we'll finish discussing, and then, you know, go.
Sounds good. After I just want to get some clarification.
Denise Stanley? Please stand.
Denise Stanley?
Denise Stanley. Um, Mayor, council members, I am Denise Stanley, Denise Darby Stanley.
All right.
Um, I am presently owner of the Lindbergh's Barbecue. My brother who's been in service for over 35 years here in
Yes.
City of Darlington.
Amen.
All right. So I'm in the process of getting this business back up and going, okay? Now, uh, I've had the fire department out, uh, they did inspection and everything, and I've still got some flaws there that I gotta correct. My thing is, right now, is I'm looking out to you guys to help me get, make this plan come true. My brother, uh, was real faithful with Darlington, in all the businesses that he had, and I'm really, I'm proud of him. He passed in last year, June 6th, and I'm the baby sister, he's been like a father to me. But I'm trying to step into his footprints to carry on what he wanted, okay? But in order to be able to do that, you know, I need to know all about what's going on in Darlington. I'm, 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 I'm past law enforcement, I work in courts. Um, 22 years in law enforcement as an officer, uh, and I worked with the South Island District for the special needs, or a little part of my law enforcement age. And I'm, I'm very pleased with what I've heard here tonight, with the understanding, the conversation and all of that. I'm real pleased with that, with me coming in as a new kid on the block. But I'm still looking at some things that I, I need to get done. Now, I, I've been waiting for a, a city inspector report, but I have not gotten it. Of course, every time, but I haven't gotten, I don't know whether you all have anything to do with that, but I have not received that report, but, uh, I would continue to try. I'm not sure if anybody in here can help me with that or not.
Of course.
I'm here.
I just did it.
But, um, I, I just want you all to know my plans, and, and, and I'm seeking your support in helping me to make this come true. Uh, I'm quite sure all of you are familiar with the restaurant there, 125 Main Street, uh, you know, they were good food, and I plan to continue that. I got the recipe for the barbecue, and I'm telling you, we're still have that. So I, I, I stand before you tonight to say that I am pleading on the case of my brother who's passed, who goal was to continue to be a part of Darlington and make the spectrum a success, and I'm looking for you guys to piggyback on with me to help me be able to do that.
Well, thank you, Denise. I just want to make clear that what you're in need of is the inspector, is the, the inspection report.
Right. The inspector already came out, yeah.
But you don't have the report.
Yes, ma'am, that's been mailed, but if I can get your email address, I'll make sure you have it, it'll be in your inbox.
I can have that, okay.
Angela, Sheila Jones, in case you didn't do that.
Right, yeah, I met Sheila when she came out. She told me she was going early, but I just haven't got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe send it to post office.
Pardon?
Maybe still send it to post office.
Well, I hope not. I want, you know, I'm really getting anxious about getting the, the business open, and, uh, everything that I can get done, I want to expedite it as, as soon as possible.
She'll be right on it, you just call her, Sheila.
Okay.
And you need to listen.
Good luck.
We're excited, we're glad you're up there to back up.
Okay. So I'm looking for you guys to help me out with that.
Oh, we got you.
You have my back.
We got your back in the sandwiches.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you for revitalizing it.
Hey, Mayor, Council, my name is William Jackson, and I'm here, um, to talk about the property on Orange Street. And, God, my history goes back to, we bought a house on St. John Street in, uh, late nineties, have been there ever since, wanted to get involved with the city, so I've been on the Historical Landmarks Commission for, I was probably there for four or five terms, basically, I don't give a hell here with those numbers. Um, you guys, the city has paid for, um, training for the Historical Landmarks Commission and kind of what all goes into historic districts and stuff like that. And changing, really, if you look back at what goes on in historic districts, when people come into town to invest money, recently, somebody on the other corner, you know, saw the house, saw the potential in the house, um, knew it was a historic district because of the markations and de, uh, demarcations along the street. So he spent four years and who knows how much money, uh, turning an older house that was not bad, but turned it into one of the great, greater houses in the neighborhood. Um, it's been proven that historical overlay districts preserve the old houses, which a lot of people are looking for. Um, so I'm just, I'm here to say, you know, let's try and figure out a compromise, some kind of way that we can keep the back half of that property or back two-thirds of that property. The back portion of that property, uh, is zoned R10, um, at best, just because anything other than single-family dwellings back there really would, if you drive down Orange Street and go down St. John's Park, Sanders Street, that's probably the most intact historic district that Darlington has. Most of those houses, um, have not, they're pretty much unaltered houses. They, they weren't ever cut up into apartments, they weren't ever changed into something else. Um, even Edward Jones, Edward Jones there, right behind the bank, you know, they kept the exterior beside, and I'm pretty sure it's the size of rooms that they've kept that house, um, to its original intent. So if Edward Jones ever moved out, somebody can move right back in there and turn that back into a house easily. Um, so I would really like to see, it's my understanding that the whole strip down Pearl Street, which should be gen, uh, general commercial, that whole strip down there was zoned R10, and the city realized it with some business that was going on there, the city realized that it was zoned residential when it should have been zoned commercial. Don't think that they thought about that whole property, that it went from Pearl Street all the way back to Orange Street, that that was one continuous piece of property. So they just went through and said, hey, this all needs to be zoned general commercial. So this is only all the, for the car lot, the dentist office, um, what was the old floors building, um, the CRC, the original Legion pub, the CRC building, the old hospital, dairy bar, all that stuff that was just wrong and zoned. So they went 70 feet back and said, okay, this is all gonna be general commercial. And Lisa, if I'm wrong in any of this, or Sheila, if I'm wrong, please correct me. But they cut that, they cut the hospital building. They drew a line through that building, which was obviously a problem, and I get that. But I'd love to, for all of us to figure out a way to keep the Orange Street side of it as a residential section, and definitely the front side should be general commercial.
I like it, okay. The historical district, it doesn't, what, it stops at Wells? Where is, I mean, or it starts, or it stops a place that?
Somewhere around.
Stop at that?
Yeah.
But, you know, because I'm thinking about the plaza right here. You know, that's, yeah, that's on Orange. I don't know whether, and then there's one side is, is residential and, but this side, all the way to Orange Street is still, uh, general commercial. Just wanna see where this, where it is, to see if there is some kind of compromise. We gotta see where some of these lines are.
Well, if there's no, no plans for it right now, I think the neighborhood, one thing I forgot to say is, you know, I've been in sales for 30 years and still aren't we to get in the speaking public? I give my words all the time, you're a little stuck. And trust me, we've taught everybody in the neighborhood, and everybody is really upset about it, but there's only a few people that are really willing to get up and do this because they've just got a fear of public speaking, no more fear of it. Um, so, um, e- everybody in that whole neighborhood is really, really concerned that if you go general commercial with that, you can't change, they, I'm, they, I'm sure they've got great intentions not to, to do anything to hurt City of Darlington, I've felt it in their voice, that she doesn't want to see anything happen. You know, the property changes hands and they want to put up AutoZone there, it's zoned general commercial, there's nothing that can be done. And now we've got neon lights and who knows what stuck right in the middle of Orange Street. And that's just, it's, it's scary for us because that stagnate investment in housing in that area of a good slant. in that area of a good slant. Well, I'm not gonna spend a hundred grand on my, the house was built in eighteen ninety-three, and there's a, some neon sign place right there. So it just, I mean, zoned general commercial is, is just really scary. So it's, it's almost like, you know, if there was ever an intention for a plan for somebody to buy that property and to do something on, something that would affect the Orange Street side of it, let's deal with it then. It's just, you know, leave it the way it is for now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I think you all recognize me from the August meeting. I was the first one that kind of got the letter and started screaming about this. What I have here is a couple handouts for each one of you. Someone could pass those back, and we'd be free. The first one that you're gonna see on the top of this is a copy of Sandborne Fire Map from nineteen thirteen. Now, these maps are available at the Library of Congress, they're also available on website from the University of South Carolina. You'll notice the highlighted area that's on that map. That's the corner that we have in question tonight. There was a house on that property from somewhere in late eighteen hundreds up until the late nineteen sixties. That was the McKeithen household. McKeithen's very influential in the neighborhood and in the City of Darlington. He was a president of one of the local banks. He also founded the town, Sawmill Town of Lumber. Very important people. It was clearly residential area. If you also notice, the back lot was separate. The piece that was the American Legion Building on Pearl Street at that time was separate. I believe that when someone came through and they established these Historical Districts, they recognized the fact that that was at one time a historical site. Now, if you go through the city's own website and you identify what the Historic District is, you will find that the St. John's Historic District is on the National Historic Register. Along with the photographs that document the sites that are on the National Historic Register is the lot in question and the building in question that are on Orange Street. These are all placed on the National Historic Register by photo documentation on the city's own website. So clearly, I believe, the evidence shows that this has not always been commercial. This has always been a historical site. Now, according to our own city code of ordinances, chapter number fifty dash seven point two, clearly states revisions to inventory map, you'll find this on page two highlighted. It clearly says at the bottom of that paragraph, that changes within the Historic District shall not be made without due consideration by the commission. Now, I don't know if Mrs. Pruitt is here tonight. Is Mrs. Pruitt here tonight? She's back there. I made a phone call after the August meeting, met Mrs. Pruitt by phone, and she informed me that as the chair of the Historic Landmark Commission, she was not even aware that this was even coming up for the city council.
No, no, I think you might be confusing me with Miss Pearson.
Miss Pearson, okay, Miss Pearson. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I stand corrected on that, thank you. And anyway, I spoke to her, she informed me that she was not even informed that there was going to be a potential change in zoning to a property that's in this, in the Historic District. So that's just not cohesive with our own city ordinances. If we continue on and we look at the third page, you'll find Darlington City Code, section fifty dash thirteen B one, where it's highlighted, every reasonable effort shall be made to provide a compatible use for a property that requires minimal alteration of the building structure or site and its environment, or to use the property for its originally intended purpose. Someone with some great wisdom took a lot of time, spent a lot of money to develop our Historic Districts, to protect the Historic Districts in our city. As a personal investor in history and a renovator of a home, I can understand why they did that, because I don't want that neon sign across the street from my house. The residents that surround that area do not want something else across the street from their house. It doesn't, it's not a fight with CRC. We don't have a problem with CRC whatsoever. We appreciate what you're doing for the community. All we're trying to do is protect our investment in our community and the livelihood of our Historic District. Right now, Mr. Jackson and I sat on my front porch this evening before the meeting, and we sat on a quiet street enjoying a conversation. They sell that piece of property, a storefront goes up front, those could become tractor-trailer docks if we make that general commercial. There's gonna be no restriction for that. So I'm asking the city council to recognize the money, the investment in time, and the residents of this community by voting against this and keeping this zoned R-ten. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council. I just wanna thank you for this opportunity to come up. I am a resident at one oh six North Sycamore. My name's Jackie Lynn Jernikin. And as a homeowner, I am concerned because it does affect the, the value of the home when something else becomes commercial. And I know that because I've been studying real estate, how to get a real estate license. So, um, as a homeowner too, as a grandmother, I have grandchildren, and I like it to stay a neighborhood, because we walk across the street, my mom and dad live on Orange, I live on Sycamore, and me and my grandchildren walk down the street and go to my mom and dad's. If something, some kinda commercial business comes up there, I'm not, you know, it's not gonna be as safe for them to play and run around in the yard and everything. We've already got a schoolhouse down the street, that brings in a lot of traffic to our neighborhood. We got the firehouse, the police station, and as you said, that little complex down there. So I would like to keep it as a neighborhood, not only because I have grandchildren, but because of my personal investment in my home. I would like to stay where it has value, and it will affect the value if you guys change that. And my parents have been there, and their house, it's nineteen seventy-four. And those homes are beautiful. All in that area, if you ride around, there are a lot of beautiful homes. So not just for the aesthetics, but also, um, because we have our money invested in it. I understand they've got money invested, but like Chip said earlier, you guys, I encourage you to go look at his house, because he has, I, I watched him work and heard him work. And it is quiet now that his work is done. But it's beautiful. You guys need to go look at it. It's gorgeous. And I try to take very good care of my house and keep curb appeal at my house, and, um, I would like to keep my investment. So please, please consider not, um, changing that zone into commercial. And thank you for your time, I appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi.
I am the pastor at Saint James', I'm next door to the CRC. And so I rise to this evening, I've heard so much about, um, everyone's concern about the CRC and the history of Darlington. So what I ask the question, whose history are we trying to preserve? Are we really trying to preserve the history of Darlington? Or are we really trying to just preserve a particular part of Darlington? And so I ask, and so with asking that question, the CRC is a part of that history. And so if we are going to make, uh, a wrong a right, we need to make a wrong a right. Now, if we are, we're being out of compliance, and if right is right, right is right, wrong is wrong. Now, I, I do believe that if it was the other way around, if it was a wrong, there would be no problem to make this right. And so, um, and I also do believe that with the unknown, I've heard the questions, so what are your plans for long-term? What are your plans for the future? If we knew the future, we would know the future. We'd know, we could predict the future. And so I do believe that the unknown is always scary, but everybody who walked in here today, there was one unknown. But you didn't seem to be concerned about that unknown. And that unknown was whether this bench or this chair is gonna hold me. Nobody expected it. You just sat down in faith, believing that the chair and the bench was gonna hold you. So I say all that to say is that the CRC is, uh, it is commercial, and so it should be treated as that. And, I mean, if it's residential, a residential lot and property should be private. I witnessed with my own eyes, I've witnessed the back lot, that's their question tonight. I've witnessed it being used by families for picnics. I've witnessed it being used for dog walking, dog fetching. If it's residential, why is it being used for that? That's what you do in a commercial lot. So the residents of Orange Street treat it as such, all right. So I petition this council, the city council, to make a wrong a right.
All right. Just wanna make this statement, that's my pastor.
That's my pastor.
Thank you for your comments. All right, unfinished business, Public Area Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen is only for two thousand, two, two hundred and three, Orange Street. We have, surely have comments on this. Um, Angela, can you, uh, address those for some of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my question was, is it, how is it zoned right now?
Okay, so, kind of.
Can you come up, can you come up, Billy can hear you?
So I heard this all night, that, you know, it's general commercial, and it was, we're trying to make a wrong a right, and what's residential, and so, um, when our zoning maps were created in the seventies, nineteen seventy-three, that property, the one in the corner, the little, the little building, was general commercial. The front, um, that front half of the old clinic or hospital, whatever it was, was general commercial. The part that was residential and why this one property is now, um, two different, one parcel, but two, um, different zoning districts, is because that back lot was five different parcels in nineteen seventy-three. So at some point, after nineteen seventy-three, after our zoning districts were made, it was combined. But when it was combined, it wasn't made into just general commercial. And so, um, so to say we're making a wrong a right, it's not necessarily making a wrong a right, because it was intentionally residential to begin with, it was five different properties. Um, and when it was purchased, um, you know, the zoning never changed. Um, so the back half.
The back half was five different properties?
So the, right, the back half was, was five different properties. So the current building that's on the one parcel in, um, the long stretch, um, is, that actual building is in a residential district.
This is the building we're talking about here.
Okay.
This is the back half, a part of the building that is in the residential zoning district. And this is the part of the building.
So the original, so the original, um, and you can see it from here. So the original, right here.
Yeah.
Just this part was general commercial. The rest of it was all residential in the original zoning maps.
Here's what I'm, here's, is, is, is what I'm looking at, getting the wrong right, because simply, whatever it was, it was just one piece that was broken up into these parts.
No, no.
If, if they were separate, were they separate?
Originally, they were separate, because all of our zoning maps have each individual parcel.
But there was no owners or something, because I would think, when, when the, when the CRC acquired it, they required all of that.
Right, so at some.
As one piece.
Right, so at some point, after our zoning maps were made, and it was all, it had the five parcels of land that was residential and then the front one that was general commercial. I'm not saying that it wasn't when CRC acquired it, likely it was all one.
Yes.
However.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is that in the spirit of our zoning district, in, uh, residential in that back half, it was, it was residential. So when it, when they combined the parcels, then it didn't change into gen, general commercial, and the back half was left residential. I'm just saying that originally, when the front half, when the front was the clinic and the other side was whatever it was, everything that faced Pearl Street on that block, to what Mr. Jackson said, absolutely, on the other side where Park Street Florist and the, um, other, um, the AT&T building, that was residential for whatever reason, that has since been changed to general commercial, 'cause that's properly zoned general commercial. On this one, we never changed it. It was general commercial in nineteen seventy-three, and the back half was, um, residential in nineteen seventy-three. And it was five parcels of land in nineteen seventy-three. When it was combined, I have no idea. That it was, the deed was transferred to CRC, um, as one parcel, that's fine too, but that's not necessarily making a wrong a right by chang, changing the entire block to general commercial.
Okay. I'm not sure what you mean by that, what we're saying, wrong to, to right. The fact that if they acquired it as one, you are going back prior to them saying it was in part, so, and that's what you are dealing with now, is the fact that you have knowledge that it was, um, in five areas and they are not. That is what, and so, obviously, those, whenever it got to be split up or whenever it got to be one, it was something that's not correct along the line, as far as coding, or as far as how it is on your documentation.
Right.
It, it, it doesn't matter. Where, where we are now is because of that, because there is, I don't know where there's any other place where one piece has the two different codes. I'm not sure of that. And if that's the case, that's what we are trying to correct now. That is what appears to us is wrong, that you got one piece with two different coding. We wanna get that straight.
Right.
And I'm with, with them. Get that straight.
Sure.
And according to what, they have taken the steps to be in compliance with the city, which says, and according to what they got back, it should be zoned general commercial. Now, if there's some other, and we wanna move on, as you see, they're in the spirit of trying to get this corrected, this is what I'm saying now, if we are not the ones to make that, but in the past, because it has been cited, there has been the same, same group, same group of citizens who complained about the same thing off of Avenue D. We did not bear it. All, and so, you know, we can, because the CRC has indicated that they don't wanna do anything that would cause a problem, but they wanna be correct.
Right. Well, and I get what you're saying.
So all of this other talk is, but that's, that's getting the wrong to right.
Right. And so, and, but, as a city, we do have another property, the Genesis property, that is zoned to different. So the original property is zoned, is zoned core commercial, and the rest of the property is zoned, um, office residential. And that hasn't been changed. Um, they are still core commercial and office residential.
It's not residential.
So, and I, and I do understand, um, the residents' concern, because general commercial does pretty much allow anything you wanna do there. Um, and so, you know, and I was looking at it, and it might be something that they could do office residential, so it does allow, um, you know, still residential, but it does, um, um, make the commercial uses more strict, so that you can't just do anything there. So, you know, there, there can be a compromise, if that's what council is so choosing to do, um, but making all of it, um, general commercial, I'm not sure would be prudent for, for the citizens that are in, in that area, in that Historic District.
So let me ask you a question. Edward Jones. Where is Edward Jones located?
It is right next to the bank on Orange Street.
And what is it zoned?
I'd have to look, I don't know.
I think it's office residential.
I can look.
So when, when was this, uh, zone changed to, uh, the front was changed to general commercial?
It was, in nineteen seventy-three, it was general commercial in the front, and it was obviously.
Nineteen seventy-three, they changed, they changed the front part to general commercial?
I just, in nineteen seventy-three, the, when, when our maps were made, it was general commercial. What, um, Mr. Jackson was speaking of was, um, Park Street Florist, um, the AT&T building that one block up.
In nineteen seventy-three, when we actually started the zone.
That's when our zoning maps are mapped, are dated.
At that point, they said, we're just gonna make the front half general commercial?
Right, and the back five parcels were residential.
But those, but those five parcels.
Is there anything else on the back of Orange Street, up in that area, that is general commercial?
Only the AT&T building.
I get this.
And next block up.
So is that, is that part of the historic?
The church beside that, what is that listed as?
The church, the church on the front side is, um, general commercial. I'll have to look and see if the, that might be, I mean, I don't, I didn't look at that part, but I mean, I can look at it, I don't have a problem.
I mean, they got the light building on Orange Street, I mean, what is that?
With AT&T, um, building being zoned general commercial. So at this point, they could come in at any time and put up a flashing sign.
At their place.
Right or wrong?
Um, they could, yes, they could.
So the challenge of whether the CRC going to put up a flashing sign has no merit, because AT&T could do the same thing.
They sell it to someone.
I don't think CRC is going to want a flashing sign. I don't think they have no desire for anything like that. So I don't understand your issue.
To answer some of the questions that were asked about what is the zoning district? Um, Edward Jones is office and residential and, um, the AT&T is core commercial.
No, but that was changed, that was changed when Park Street Florist changed.
Because this was turned core commercial right here.
Still a city block over, it's also right off of our square.
But still, I mean, it's what we asked.
After the AT&T, after the AT&T building, it's all residential, um, until you get to the fire department.
So what else is it that's only one block?
I don't see how we go, and in the middle, essentially in the middle of our historic district, we go into a general commercial. Um, I understand the plight with the building and how you have the back section of the building that's not general commercial. And I'm interested in bringing the general commercial line back behind your building. It looks like you have some new property markers that go about where that oak tree is. I'm comfortable, you know, moving that GC back to that line to encompass the whole building. But from my perspective, we need to maintain our historic, um, districts. They're there for a reason. It's what's, um, brings Darlington's character, is our beautiful homes. I'm also, um, a little taken aback, um, with the city code that he unfortunately brought us, where it says, changes within the historic district shall not be made without due consideration by our historic commission. Um, so if we haven't brought it to the historic commission, then that's also an issue.
I don't see an issue with making it general commercial because they, they already stated they have no intentions of doing anything, um, against Darlington's ordinance or that's going to hinder or harm the city of Darlington, other historic district. Um, the city had no problem, definitely this council had no problem when it was on the corner of Avenue D and Main Street, when those citizens didn't want a part of that park and the basketball court, and they had about two or three hun... I'm speaking, that park had about two or three hundred signatures who said they didn't want a basketball court. But this council had no problem ignoring those citizens and making that property general commercial. But I guess because of the side of town it was on and who brought it to council, which I feel like those citizens was ignored. And I'm not saying ignore anybody, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm trying to say. All I'm saying is that, uh, CRC clearly stated they have no intentions of doing anything that's going to harm the historic district.
The park you're mentioning is the Terrence Caraway Park and we knew what their intention was. They said they would like to change it so that they could fulfill building a park for Terrence Caraway. And I don't think that is comparable. Um, you're talking about changing it for, for an unforeseeable future. If there's an interest that comes about that they would like to change the general commercial and come up to us and ask us to change for a specific reason, then I'd be happy to hear. But just a general commercial blanket, um, ordinance in the middle of historic distance, district just does not set a good precedent for preserving our homes. When we were on, excuse me, when we were on Everett, Everett Street, we had a house torn down and we had half the community blow up at us. Um, and that was just one home, I mean, imagine if we put a gas station below our community. So I just don't see, without understanding, a clear understanding, what they want to do with the land that we should blanket authorize in a general commercial. It just does not seem, you know, smart for the future of the city, so I'm sorry.
And the point of it was, those citizens didn't want a basketball court. But you had no problem voting to put a basketball court in the middle of this, of their neighborhood.
Uh, from my understanding, and this is all a long time ago, but we had, you know, different personality issues within the different groups that were trying to do that. It wasn't the whole community like you elaborate to.
It was about two hundred signatures that they had on petition.
No, my turn to tell them that. I'll correct that issue on D Avenue. On D Avenue, it was before I was mayor and, uh, it was a conflict because I was mayor, but you only had one person to bring in, to bring in names and nobody else showed up. So there was, they might have been two hundred, but I don't think there's two hundred people in that neighborhood and nobody's, and there's not a basketball court going there, so it'll be a nice, uh, almost a million dollar, um, park going there for four hundred officers that have died in our state. And it's again, as Mr. Gardiner said, uh, when I met Alex and Terry Way, I myself brought that to the city council, we had a plan. Uh, at this point, we don't have a plan and that's why I have an issue with this. I don't have an issue with CRC either. I do have issue with, there is no plan, it's been this way for forty-eight years. Um, it's not in compliance, out of compliance with the city because the city did that. Um, you know, if, again, if you, at any point, you bring up a plan and say, this is what we want to build here, uh, we want to do something at this point, then, you know, we can address that. At this point, is, again, she has no plans of doing anything or any harm, or to the city, has done any harm to the city. But again, uh, she dies or lives on or something that happens and it's, it's already regulated at that point, then anybody else can come along and put whatever they care to put there in the middle of the neighborhood.
Is the AT&T building, is that in the historic district?
Starts right after that.
Huh?
It starts right after that, next to White House. You got a church parked in that, the AT&T building and then that first nice old, St. John's Street.
So the Edward Jones house is not in it? What, what's that street? Is that, is that, um...
It's on the street.
Is that, what street that is, Dargan?
This is the map. If you see the shaded area, the gray shaded area is the historic overlay.
Mm-hmm.
To kind of give you an idea.
So it's on, so this side, I mean, it sits on one side and then goes down?
The AT&T building is in there.
That's what I'm saying, so...
But it was there before.
In seventy-three?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying.
Been there the whole time, so, and the historic district was not formed until eighty-eight, eighty-nine.
Okay, so as well...
There's a historic district.
Before it was registered on the national register.
So it would be similar to, um, Bill Allen's law office. It was zoned OR while he had his law office there, but just as soon as he shut down his law office, they converted that. From the law office, OR, it immediately went to R-ten zoning because it changed occupancy. And he wasn't going to do anything, they revamped, they moved a house out of it, so now it's R-ten. So things can change even though it's in the...
It, it, it never actually changed zoning districts. It was a issue of non-conforming status because it had been in the law office for so many years prior to, so on, grandfathered in. Because it was our, it was continuously operating.
Oh, we're trying to get at, it seems like to me this is just a lot of stuff. We can work this out if, if they're telling you, you... If it's all about putting a plan together for you to be, if putting a plan, it is never going to be that kind of, that kind of business. If that's what it takes for you to feel comfortable that it would never go to nothing, I'm not sure what, if this is what you, you're saying to your problem.
I'm just saying they have their plan of what they're going to put there, so most of the...
But it's, but it is definitely not a plan to be where you would have.
They want to put, whatever they're, and, and it needs to be zoned as general commercial and it's...
I got you. As the same thing as what we're saying, because you say it's going to be a part, they could say, also say, if part of that, part of the CRC is that, they would like to see that as a part, so it can, can be continued to be used by the family picnics that they've had out there, walking the dogs and all of that. I mean, I don't see, I mean, that's what's being done now, they can continue for it to be that way, if that seems to settle.
I don't think anybody has a problem with having picnics out there.
No, that's what I'm saying, they can continue to say that. That's the point.
They have the picnics, the community has the picnic, it's having the picnic.
Yeah, different one, I know.
I haven't been on that property.
I know.
And Ms. Gerber, please understand, that's a disappointment because I've seen you outside your... And please know, it's a public, public facility, you're always, you're, you're all you're wanting.
I got it, I got it, that's good.
I'd, I'd like to ask you questions about that one, because in the past, the, the building that faces Orange Street.
Yes.
That's there, was used as a, a consignment shop or a thrift store. So if it stays in the zoning that it currently is, does that mean the CRC can continue to operate the thrift store or consignment shop as it has for the last thirty years? If it's still zoned as R-ten?
As long as, as long as it hasn't been shut down for ninety days. So our conformity ordinance as it means is, if it's in...
So it would be out of compliance.
So it would be, if it hasn't been running for ninety days.
So there, there's one of the, the crux of this thing. The other side is because that property is split, who's to say on the general commercial side, we wouldn't sell that property as a whole? And they tear down the buildings that are currently on Pearl Street and because that's already zoned general commercial, they could put anything and everything and you're still going to have the lights facing Orange Street. It would not change the fact.
They would be on the front half of the property, not the back half.
Then you're going to be seeing it. If you, if you got me on light, you're going to see it right on Orange Street.
Your property is a full county block.
If I, if I had to imagine, I would think that if submitted to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that they wanted to operate a variety store in two oh three, just something like a, you know, trinket shop or a variety store or something that wasn't a taxi cab stand or something with a ton of traffic and they just wanted to put a variety store. I would imagine that if that went in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals, that that would pass.
All right, any more discussion from council?
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I was handed this as part of the public hearing and I'll hand it to you so you have it for the minutes. Um, it's a petition of opposition to zoning, proposed zoning change. It says the purpose of this petition is to voice our opposition to the proposed zoning change in two oh three Orange Street from R-ten low density residential to general commercial. We all desire to see our city rebound and prosper, but we also desire to protect and preserve our historic districts and residential neighborhoods. We have more than enough vacant commercial buildings and properties within our city to develop. We do not need to remove portions of our historic district and intrude upon quiet residential neighborhoods. We, the bloke, citizens, uh, are asking you to oppose the sudden change. And, um, there are several, and I'm going to hand this to her.
Any further discussion?
Uh, one, kind of correction, Avenue D and Main Street, that part, that zoning has always been general commercial. It was not changed and a park is always allowed in, is a permitted use in all zoning districts.
How many signatures, ma'am? How many signatures are on this issue?
Oh, yeah, because the fish market used to be there. Oh, okay.
Any further discussion from council?
Oh, okay. She's got a hand over here. Oh, what were you asking?
I said, any further discussion from council?
Yeah, they had a hand there.
We just wanted to know how many signatures.
It's public hearing though.
End of conversation for, we'll be here all night, but keep conversation from...
But you got a public hearing, that's why, that's why y'all put it in the minute, in the meeting. It's a public hearing.
How many signatures, how many signatures are on the petition? She just gave show.
Twelve.
Twelve?
Ish.
Okay, thank you. Twelve-ish. Twelve-ish signatures?
Historic.
Well, the people that are going to be interested are the people that live on St. John's Street, Park Street, St. John's Street and, uh, Orange Street.
Okay, yes, sir.
Nothing else.
I would like to urge the council to be very cautious how you proceed with this because there's been a lot of mention tonight about setting precedents and about going back to past precedents.
Mm-hmm.
If I could purchase from Park Street all the way to my home on Orange Street, if you vote yes for this, that means that I could change that whole block to general commercial because I combined it all. You're going to set a precedent here, you're allowed to open Pandora's box.
In response to that, a precedent has already been set. Precedent was already set without beneath the main street.
We didn't change the zoning on Avenue D and Main Street.
But the use, but the use of the property.
The zoning wasn't changed. Yes, ma'am.
Split zoning does exist in, in a lot of municipal areas and that seems to be the case with this situation, the, the rear part of the property being residential when the properties were combined. I don't think that one zoning should take precedence over the other. So the back, the rear part of the property should stay residential and the front part can stay commercial. It just means that there's a mixed use and a different kind of density requirement for building on the back of the property than there is for the front.
That's right. Thank you.
I would like to motion that we close the public hearing.
Second, second. Two seconds. Ms. Beckus. Ms. Beckus.
Move on. I'm thinking about it.
Just reading.
Yeah, I'm tired.
Hi, okay, thank you. Our motion's closed. Okay. All right, second reading, ordinance 2021-13, reading the zone in two thousand, two hundred and three, Orange Street from R-ten to general commercial.
I make a motion that we move, rezone ordinance 2021-13, rezone in two oh three Orange Street from R-ten to general commercial.
Second.
What else?
Uh...
No, or you don't want to comment or?
I mean, I don't want to go forward because I mean, I believe that's it, so no.
Okay, so no, okay.
No.
No, very, no. No. Our motion's closed.
And Ms. Mayor, like I said last time, I'm recusing myself because of the representation I've had with Ms. Johnson and her daughters.
She'll have to have a paper for you to fill out when you come up here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Please understand that my interest as a councilman, I only speak for myself at this point, but if you would like to read zone, that part of your building that's outside of the general commercial that y'all may have an issue with, I'll be happy to, um, support that. But the backside, just looking, feel comfortable, uh, as great as any historic district.
And I have no problem with it either if we have a plan on what's going to be put in there. So until we know what's going to be put in there, I would prefer to wait. All right, thank you. All right, new business, uh, CBPG Resolution for downtown street skate private, Mrs. Ross.
Mayor and Council, um, we are asking county to approve a resolution authorizing the submission of an application by the City of Darlington to the Division of Community Grant Programs in South Carolina Department of Commerce. This is a grant for seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars for downtown street skate improvements. The total project cost estimate is eight twenty-five, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. The City of Darlington shall provide the local match and we have previously, uh, had resolutions and discussions with county and county council has approved to, uh, provide us that ten percent match money, that seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, we've discussed this in, in the past, uh, few meetings. Uh, the, any cost savings will be shared with the grants administration on a pro-rata basis and the city manager is authorized to execute documents in conjunction with the application and submit all necessary documents in accordance with policy. And we do need to approve this, um, so that we may apply, uh, for this funding. The project area, and this is in your packets here, is this, uh, core commercial area of downtown as where all the project work would happen and this was approved by Commerce to be that area. And this was approved by Commerce to be that area. And the project behind that is kind of a general scope of work. Um, and in talking with Department of Commerce, uh, working on this. Uh, this would include paving a significant portion of the trail. If you look on the map, you'll see the blue line which goes behind the library and connects to downtown. Uh, as well as landscaping trees, security cameras, benches, ashtrays, garbage cans, all that sort of thing in these areas. It would also include paving the Ward Street parking lot. So this is the parking lot behind well, the old Wells Fargo building and Quiante's and Wilson Senior Care redoing that whole, uh, corner. Purchasing that last little corner, uh, putting sidewalks and landscaping and that sort of thing. And repaving and redoing the landscaping and things at the South Main Street downtown parking area next to News and Press. And of course adding security cameras to all these areas. Uh, we'd also be adding amenities and furniture in the public walkway, which is the McQuillan Building, which connects the parking area, um, behind the building to the square and to the front where people can access the, the businesses. Uh, this would also include, uh, de, the decorations on the signal boxes, which would feature art history. And, uh, awnings for the buildings on the back of the buildings that would face the new courthouse. This is why the county, uh, is working with us. They're putting in so much investment, seventeen million dollars on their new courthouse. And they'd like to look at something a little nicer, um, than the backs of those buildings as they currently are. And, um, their match money would go towards painting the backs of those buildings, putting awnings, uh, and making that a more attractive place, considering how many people would be going to that, um, facility, uh, visiting. Uh, this would also include, uh, paving the Carnegie Library parking lot. And creating on Hewitt Street, um, that section of Hewitt Street where the Carolina Bank Plaza Building and there's the Morrel Norman shop, there is a, uh, a street that we own. And we gave the rest of the street to the county.
That's crazy, we gave the whole street.
We gave the whole street to the county and they don't want, they wanna give it back to us. Um, the section of that street that is one-way, that it, that goes beside the buildings.
Yeah.
Uh, we would turn that concrete that and turn it into an outdoor seating dining kind of area with lighting and seating and, uh, landscaping and things like that.
I'm curious, what is this corner right here? Where this thing diamonds into the corner, what is that?
Where?
I'm sorry, I need to look and see what you're saying.
Why is it?
That, that's how the, uh, zoning map goes. And I think it's somewhat connected to how those parcels are created along the old railroad bed. And that's why it's at that weird kind of angle.
So just so everybody's clear, uh, this grant only allow, uh, for a certain distance out from the square. It also did not allow for us to use any of the money to touch other people's property for as the buildings, paint the fronts of the buildings and so forth, except for the match part. And the match part comes from, would be coming from the county. So our grants with them was that we would use that to paint the back of the buildings for them. If there was any additional funds left over, then we could use that to do whatever, to paint or put a hole in on someone's building. So that the citizens know that we didn't all of a sudden get eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and just do whatever we wanted to do with it. There were, there were limitations of what you can and can't do with it and how far out you could get. Congratulations to the county for providing the seventy-five thousand dollar match. They was, uh, as we already agreed with them, they was Carnegie Library. And they're looking at giving us back that part of the portion, um, by the old Bill's building and the Morrel Normans there in the corner there. So we can use that for whatever. They're, they're, they're not looking to make that a driveway through, they would like for it to be closed off.
And this would also include some wayfinding, um, and decorative street signage, decorative stop signs, all based on what the communication board has in their, um, design plan for downtown. Um, you could see an example of that, uh, stop sign there at Cashwell when you enter the square.
Lisa, what, uh, it's a require, why do we have to have a, a resolution?
Uh, it's required.
I mean, what?
It is required by the, for us to apply, we have to have this resolution approved that says you are authorizing the city manager to, um, do all those documents. And for us as staff to apply. We can't just apply by ourselves.
I just wanna thank Councilwoman Thomas and this Godbowl, Councilwoman Godbowl for there for some of the county side to help get this started.
Right. This is just the beginning.
Sent out a lot of letters, asked for a lot of letters to be sent out. Did a lot of work also, we appreciate greatly, appreciate that. Assistance.
I'll. I'd like to motion that we approve the CDB, CDBG resolution for downtown s- streetscape project.
I'm sorry. Ms. Beckus. Ms. Reed. Ms. Sager. Ms. Millian?
Yes.
Ken, hi. Can I question for you? Thank you.
Yeah. For our city administration. What we doing with that? Hold on.
All right, city administrative, moving. Ms. Ross.
Uh, yes, uh, city manager asking for this to you. You have received this in your packet, um, previously back in June. The appraised value of the, um.
Have you on will? Guys? Ms. Ross.
Um, so we're discussing the Dargon House, which is at the corner of Liberty and Pearl Street, which used to be used as the City of Darlington administration building. We got a appraisal for the property. It is appraised at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And it has about four thousand eight hundred square feet. Perfectly usable, turnkey, could be leased, could be sold, could be used by us. That's, and that's up to you all. Um, in the, the city purchased the house for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and then dumped probably at least that much into it, um, to get it into a usable space because Justin Hall was a little too crowded. And, um, in twenty fifteen, Hurricane Matthew.
When we purchased?
Uh, we purchased in ninety-nine. Hurricane Matthew in twenty fifteen, uh, the water damaged the building. The chimney on, at, on top of the roof fell into the, uh, attic space. Because of the construction of the building, uh, it didn't go any further than that. We did with, over several years, get the roof replaced, the chimney fixed, um, with help of a shipboat. So the roof is fine, it still does need to be painted, it hasn't been painted since nineteen ninety-nine. And it needs new HVAC units.
Okay, so what's the question now is what?
So the question right now is for y'all to decide what you wanna do with it.
Sure. Um, Mr. Mayor, um, I remember back in the spring when, when this item came up and y'all, the council asked for, um, an appraisal. And as, as I started, I found the appraisal and I just don't want it to sit on the shelf. So what the administration is looking for is in direction. Do you wish for us to pursue selling it? Do you wish to keep it? We just, we're looking for guidance.
Any recommendations?
Well, my suggestion is that if you, if you lease it to someone for any amount of money, a thousand dollars, five hundred or two thousand dollars a month, uh, then we're certainly responsible for maintaining it. You already dumped a lot of money in it as, uh, as a.
And all those adjoining signs that lead you to a specific destination. So that was one idea of what to use the property for. Uh, the only inquiries about the property, uh, serious inquiries over the past five years has been people that wanted to tear it down. And just because it's the location in the central district across from Piggy with the Lianos is, is very popular. So that's the only uses that, that anybody seriously has proposed. I've seen houses like this be used as, uh, doctor's offices and some sort of professional offices before, but we've not had such interest.
I'm not, I'm not crazy about selling the building. I understand we don't want the overhead, we don't want to continue to invest money in it if it's not doing anything for us. But I would really prefer that we could figure out how to lease and incorporate up in the lease, if there's a way to do that.
My, I don't wanna maintain it.
You don't? You don't? Yeah. Yes, my interest is right now, just to take this as information. Um, hopefully we'll get a, hopefully we'll get a work session with, um, with our new city manager coming soon. And at that point, maybe discuss it as a group, um, do a little brainstorming. But I mean, right at this moment, I just wanna say thank you for the information.
Ms. Beckus, Ms. Reed?
That's fine, yeah. I am tired now.
Okay. We'll just table that at this point then. All right, thank you, Lisa. Board of Commissioner, ordinance?
Uh, we have, uh, received, uh, Dr. Andrew Cohen's, um, application to the Williams Park Committee. Um, it's included in your packet. And I'm presenting it to you as a nominee. He has served, uh, the Williams Park Committee for years, uh, until he, his business took him away. Um, and his foundation has funded many, many projects, um, at the park.
I would like to motion to approve Andy Cohen to the Williams Park Board.
Sir. Ms. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Reed? Ms. Beckus? Ms. Millian?
Yes.
Hi.
Hey, Mr. Karen, thank you. Okay, American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one resolution.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, uh, as you approved the resolution earlier for the CDBG grant, we also have to pass a resolution, uh, in order to receive, um, coronavirus funding that's called the American Rescue Plan. Darlington City is not competitive, we're gonna get this money. Uh, over two years, we will receive two million nine hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. But in order to do that, we have to pass this resolution, designate an authorized representative and contact person for purposes of the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. I, as the city manager, would be the, um, uh, designated as the municipality's authorized representative. And Mrs. Priggin, as the clerk, in, in her capacity as the clerk and treasurer, will be designated as the contact person.
Ms. Payne, can you give us that, the amount again, please?
The dollar amount?
Yes, please.
It's over two years. It is two million nine hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. And in your packet is information on, on what it pays for.
All right, I'd like to motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one resolution, dash John Payne, city manager.
Second.
Ms. Beckus? Ms. Reed? Ms. Sager? Ms. Millian?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Thank you, Ms. Payne.
We also need to designate Mrs. Priggin as the contact person.
And Mrs. Priggin is designated as the contact person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, I'd ask to amend the agenda for the DDR A. Um, we were out there, I'm not sure who all was out, I saw a few of you. Um, again, we had one in, uh, they had, they had one. We sponsored, the city sponsored, um, June, July was the first one. Uh, got rained out of the beginning, but then turned out to be really good. Uh, August got rained out of the end, kinda died off. Uh, was still a good turnout, um, then, um, I think that was June, uh, July, August. Yeah, this first one was September, this one was September, time's flying by. This one was September and I don't, I don't know if anybody got a exact count, but I would estimate a thousand people there, it was, it was a herd of people. Uh, I had been brought up a number of times from people just walking around through town, coming up to me or commenting on how well they enjoyed it. Again, as I said, uh, people of all ages and, uh, all parts of the town everywhere. Uh, just really sitting down, having a good time, enjoying good music. I don't agree with alcohol here cuz I'm an alcohol drinker, but there was nobody either that I saw drunk or, or causing disturbance. It was just a bunch of people coming together, having a great time. And, uh, it made Darlington really look good. And so as we sat there, we, I, I spoke with Lisa and asked her, you know, we, you know, a lot of people don't wanna sit in. It's, we've got one planned for October. Uh, our thoughts were if, um, I think she's got a, a partial, um, sponsor for, if we were to do one in November, that the city could also sponsor part of it for November. Uh, and then in December, instead of having it the first of the month, is to see if she could get sponsorship from the DDR A. Is approved, would approve it is to have a, a party from December the thirty-first, that's on New Year's Eve party at, at Orange Square. Um, if the, of course, the DDR A would have to approve on it. But, uh, we're not asking for any funding for that, just asking to see if the city would be willing to help fund anything along with, um, to continue this. So then, of course, it's gonna get cold in January, February, March, you won't really be able to do much outside. But I just hate to see it cut off and, uh, got it going really good. And I think, um, everybody thoroughly enjoyed it, made the city of Darlington look good. Uh, as Mr. Millian has asked a lot of times, um, there is no way to quantify what it brought back into our town. But our purpose, uh, I would think of that is to make our town look good, people see what's going on, um, social media and, um, good comments on, on for our town. So it's good publicity up there.
It was a wonderful community then, I couldn't imagine having it at the, um, race track alley. I mean, it would've been just impossible.
It was the best place on the state.
It was just wonderful, I've never seen such a crowd, um, besides for our big festival.
Need to build on it.
That's what happens with level ten. It's level teens.
We'll have to keep it up. But I would be happy to motion approve, um, another round for November and December, um, for the DDR A funding for music development.
Do we have a amount? Or do we have a proof of?
It's approximately, um, four thousand per event.
So then?
Um, we've got a potential sponsor of about fifteen hundred. So that, you know, for a November event, that would leave us, um, needing twenty-five hundred dollars for November. And then of course, we're ready to do December.
So sixty-five?
Yeah.
So sixty-five hundred?
I'd love to amend my motion with sixty-five hundred dollars.
Say it again? I'm, I'm trying to kind of look for me.
So I would like to, uh, motion that we approve the DDR A funding for, um, Janu, or excuse me, December and November music events for the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars.
A sec.
Hey, Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Beckus? Ms. Sager? Okay, Mr. Millian?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Thank you, thank you, Lisa. All right, um, department head, the board, say anything from the department head, any questions? Okay. Any council comments?
No, I'm glad to, uh, I'm just, I was just concerned about those bullets on the numbers, number six. And, and we worked it out, so I just, uh, wanted to convey that to our city manager.
So we always have the opportunity to speak ourselves.
And if we have.
We allow someone to go over tonight, it's up to our, it's our discretion to, to, if somebody's been ordered in to.
We gotta be flexible, I mean, we really do.
We can carry on, we can carry on.
Right.
The city manager, we can cut off.
You're comfortable with it as we have it, just without the word "not". Right?
Right, yeah, don't, don't restrict, cuz see, I'm encouraging folk to come. That's one of the things that I'm really, please come. And I don't want them to come and feel like at the point where they can't say or be exposed to all of the council that they can't express themselves or get any feedback from us. That this may be at any point. But anyway, that's all, and, uh. anyway, that's all, and, uh, we worked it out, I wanna thank the council for that, I really did.
Payne, just wanted to mention one thing, and, and just for clarity's sake, I, I did speak with Ms. Beckus and, and Ms. Reed this morning, we, we discussed this, um, and going through the ordinance, I did wanna mention, and we can change this in the future, right now, uh, based on precedent, you get five minutes for public comment, but your ordinance states two minutes, and I just wanna bring that attention, I just wanna check, bring that attention. And we're happy to have our new city manager, working with us, and we're...
Welcome.
We're, uh, happy to have Mr. Millian, uh, we praise you here, Mr. Millian, uh, I hope you know that you got a bunch of people praying for you.
And I certainly appreciate all the prayers, I could, could feel the prayers, and I think that's the difference between my not being here and my being here, so thank you each and every one of you.
Yes, sir. Our community sure came together.
As a hallelujah for me.
I bet you're doing much better.
Thank you.
All right, um, okay, you have a motion to go into executive session for Police Chief Washington and Fire Department Chief Kavanaugh to discuss personnel matter, American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one, city property appraisal and personnel matter, uh, city manager John Payne, uh, the City of Darlington mayor may not vote after the executive session.
Motion as stated. Executive.
And Ms. Reed? Beckus? Ms. Millian?
Yes.
Okay, aye, thank you.